Good evening. This, the 104th meeting of the 71st term of the Baltimore City Council is now called to order. Please turn off all cell phones or put them on vibrate. Meetings of the City Council are open to the public for the duration of the meeting. Persons attending must behave in an orderly manner or are subject to removal. Council chambers must be clear that at the conclusion of the meeting, failure to comply may result in charge of trespassing. Tonight's invocation will be led by Theodas Freeman of Hope Community Ministry. After the invocation, please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, the Pledge of Allegiance will be led by members of the Cub Scout Troop 1000 from the Cathedral of Murray Al Queen immediately following the prayer.
Let us pray. Father God, we come this evening, first of all, to give you thanks for another day that you have blessed us. Now, we ask your blessing upon this meeting. We ask your blessing upon each councilman, Lord, that is represented here and upon the President. We ask, Lord, your blessing upon our communities, that you would come into our communities, lead and guide us, that we might be a blessing to those whom they have been charged to lead into God. Give them power, oh Lord, but help them to keep in mind that the power that exists is because you have allowed each person to exist in each district. Bless them and guide them. In the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen. That we be led into the Pledge of Allegiance by our troop.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to thank the Cub Scout Troop 1000 from Cathedral of Murray Al Queen for doing their civic duty today. Let's give them a hand. The clerk will call the roll of the members.
President Young, Kraft, Scott, Inspector Middleton, Mosby, Welsh, Rysinger, Costello, Stokes, Branch, Clark. Mr. President, with the quorum.
Thank you. Tonight's showcase Baltimore presentation is Marco Merrick of Alpha Phi Alpha Delta Lambda Chapter. Welcome.
Good evening. I'm pleased to share felicitations with you from the more than 52,000 men of Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity Incorporated around the world, men of many colors, races and cultures. On the threshold of our 109th anniversary, Alpha Phi Alpha is the first Greek letter into collegiate fraternity established then for African-American men on December 4th, 1906, at Cornell University in Ithaca, New York. If you might imagine, seven African-American students at an Ivy League institution in the early 1900s. While these young, black scholars were restricted in their pursuits of academic, social and humanitarian development, and yet their tenacious efforts gave birth to an organization that has supplied voice and vision to the struggle of African-Americans and people of color around the world for the past century. Additionally, the seven founders who we call jewels, we can also boast of such distinguished members as Baltimorean, Supreme Court Justice Thurgood Marshall, W. E. B. Du Bois, Martin Luther King Jr., the iconic humanitarian Paul Robeson, and many more giants who have helped shape America. As President of Delta Lambda Chapter here in Baltimore City, in the west part of Baltimore City, I'm proud to note that we are the fourth oldest alumni chapter, which is comprised of collegiate men of high accomplishment. In our 96 years of rich history, we have influenced this community by the likes of such distinguished members as our founder Carl J. Murphy, founder of the African-American newspaper, music icon Dr. Nathan Carter, his brother and world-renowned pastor Reverend Harold A. Carter, Henry Parks, Raymond Haysbert, the late Dr. Levi Watkins, and State Senator Clarence Blount. Currently, among our members are University of Maryland Baltimore County President Dr. Freeman A. Robowski III, Dr. Earl Richardson, the retired president of Morgan State University, the current president of Morgan State University, Dr. David Wilson, Dr. Calvin Burnett, the retired president of Coppin University, Dr. William Heisch, the retired president of the University of Maryland of Eastern Shore, the president of Baltimore County Public Schools, the superintendent, rather, Dr. Dallas Dance, and former White House Fellow and Rhodes Scholar Wes Moore. Our chapter is known for more college and university presidents than any chapter in the history of Alpha Phi Alpha, and many distinguished members in the fields of medicine, education, business, government, science, technology, and community service, including our Eastern Region Vice President, who is a Baltimorean, R. Anthony Mills, the Executive Director of the Park Heights Renaissance. I am a native Baltimorean and a product of Baltimore City Public Schools, having gone to Leith Walk Elementary School, Chinklin Middle School, Northern High School, Towson, then State University, and the University of Baltimore. I am delighted to share with you that we are all holding the light of Alpha by raising the standard of manly deeds, scholarship, and love for all mankind. So I am proud to share with you, because you have a handout at your desk, council members, that we have just initiated 40 more gentlemen into our fraternity just last night. So if I look sleep deprived, I am. With more than 150 active members in our chapter at Delta Lambda, we continue to support Baltimore City and our community in a number of ways, including voter registrations, Project Alpha, where we support local school students, the Marion House Shelter for Women, the March of Dimes Walk for Babies, a national partnership with Big Brothers and Big Sisters, the Comcast Care Days, and a new initiative called the Alpha Esquires Program at Coppin State University, which helps the students at the Coppin Academy. The Botilian Scholarship, which is our signature program, is what you have a cursory summary of, actually, over the past 13 years, has successfully assisted more than 200 high school males in the Baltimore metropolitan area to transition from high school to college and forward into successful and productive careers. We have garnered nearly half million dollars in scholarships for those young men. I'm happy to share also that as the founding director of the Community Concert Choir of almost 200 voices, our lovely mayor's wonderful mother, Dr. Nina Rawlings, is a member in that choir, and that choir collaborates with Alpha Phi Alpha to raise money each fall for our Botilian program. We encourage you to take a look at the Delta Lambda website, which is delta lambda dot org, for more information. It is my remarkable pleasure to have been given this opportunity to speak with you, to acknowledge among us the work that we do, but to also acknowledge among you the work that you do, and my fellow Greeks who are here in the respective organizations, because we're all doing the same by enriching humankind. I commend the City Council members for the outstanding work that you do to make my home, Baltimore City, the place that we are proud of. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you, Marco, for all that the Alpha Phi Alpha Delta Lambda Chapter does to help make Baltimore a better place and for the mentorship that you all do on a daily basis. I know that Councilman Scott has this mentoring program where we're trying to get more male mentors. We have the women that have stepped up to the plate, but we want more men. And I heard you say you are part of the big boys' organization, Big Boy Big Sisters, and we want to, as much as possible, reach out to all of the, you know, male fraternities to step up to the plate and help us to mentor our youth. We have over 303 murders, I think it is now, and the more mentors we can get for our young boys and our young men, the Marion. So thank you for everything that you do. It is the council's custom to generalize the invocation. I ask for a motion to generalize the prayer. Motion by Councilman Wells, second by Councilman Henry. All those in favor of generalizing the prayer say aye. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the motion is adopted. We'll now proceed with the adoption of the journal.
Mr. President, the Journal with proceedings from the November 9th City Council meeting is on the council members' desks.
Is there a motion to approve the journal? Motion by Councilman Scott, second by Council Vice President Rysinger. All those in favor of adopting the journal say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion is encouraged, the journal is adopted. Bill will be introduced.
City Council Bill 15-0596, Franchise Mobility, Ordinance for the Purpose of Granting a Franchise to Mobility LLC, a Nevada limited liability company with business headquarters in California, to construct, install, maintain, repair, relocate, replace, and remove certain facilities relating to the provision of a distributed antenna systems, services in and across certain streets and public ways, subject to certain terms and conditions, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsored City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Housing and Community Development Committee. Resolution to be introduced.
City Council Resolution 15-0277R, Shop Small, Spend Big on Small Business Saturday, November 18th, 2015, November 28th, 2015. Resolution for the purpose of celebrating the 5th Annual Small Business Saturday in Baltimore City, honoring all small businesses for their many contributions to the economy and the quality of life in this country, and encouraging Baltimore City residents to shop small, spend big on our city's main streets, downtown shops, and the many varied and exciting neighborhood retail establishments on Small Business Saturday. Sponsored President Young, Henry Middleton, Stokes, Costello, Clark, Rysinger.
Please note, Councilman Kraft, Councilman Scott, Councilman Kraft, Councilman Mosby, Councilwoman Specter, Councilman Kern, Councilman Welch, and Councilman Branch as co-sponsors. First of all, we always try, this is the fifth year of this resolution, of spending in our main street corridors and our small businesses who are the backbone of the city of Baltimore. They are the ones who really hire people who live in the city, and we need to do everything that we can to support our small business. And this is a big way of doing that, by making sure that we go there and spend during this week, and we should do it throughout the year, but particularly around the holidays. We try to make sure, we encourage our citizens to shop and spend their money right here in the city of Baltimore. And I want to thank all my co-sponsors. And at this time, I recognize Council Vice President Rysinger.
Mr. President, I move to suspend the appropriate rules so that the council can immediately adopt this resolution.
Second by Councilman Kraft. All those in favor of suspended rules to adopt this resolution say aye. All opposed, all those in favor of suspended rules to adopt this resolution say aye. All those opposed, nay. Chair recognizes Council Vice President Rysinger.
Yeah. Mr. President, I move the resolution favorable.
Second by Councilman Scott. All those in favor of adopting Resolution 15-0277R say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion is encouraged, this resolution is adopted. You can find the consent count in Section A at the back of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent count? Motion by Councilwoman Middleton, second by Councilman Kern. All those in favor of approving the consent count, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion is encouraged, this count is approved. Chair recognizes Council Vice President Rysinger.
Mr. President, this time I move to extend floor privileges to my special guest, Ms. Addie Jones, the oldest living woman in Maryland and Baltimore City.
Second by Councilman Stokes. All those in favor of extending floor privileges to my special guest, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion is encouraged, and the guest may, Ms. Jones may take the floor. today. She came and spent lunch with us earlier, and we asked that they bring her back this evening so we can recognize her. We have flowers that we want to present to her. 112 years old, let's give her a hand. And the name of the home is Erica and Eric, Home of Care. They are the ones, assisted living, in charge of the care that Ms. Jones is giving. And we have a resolution, and it says, "The City Council of Baltimore Resolution. Be hereby known to all that the City Council of Baltimore offers its sincerest congratulations to Addie Jones, Addie Jones, I'm sorry, Addie Jones, in recognition of your 112th birthday celebration on June 21st, 2015, and for being one of the oldest residents of Baltimore City and the state of Maryland. You are a true beacon of light. The entire membership extends best wishes on this memorable occasion and directs this resolution be presented on the 16th day of November, 2015." Resolution 5707 by Council President Young and all members. Do you want to say something, Sharon? Sharon attended her actual birthday.
Yes, she resides in a wonderful facility, home, really, on Roseland Avenue, and I had the opportunity to participate in the 112th birthday celebration. And, oh, there was lots of food and beverages, and she participated, and all took wonderful pictures. It was just a wonderful occasion, and the people that take care of her, it's like, everyone there is part of the family, so very spiritual, clean, just the place is wonderful. So that helps in the longevity of life, keeping our seniors happy and healthy. So thank you.
And don't think that Ms. Jones is as quiet as she is now, because I've seen how feisty she is.
Mr. President, could she tell us, could she tell us what the secret was for 112?
She told us at age 99, no husband and no children.
Uh-oh. So if we could get this picture, if somebody hold us that.
If we can just get this picture.
Wait a minute, that's my sister right there.
I'm going to take a picture.
I hope I look as good as Ms. Addie looked when I get to be at least 75. And don't get fooled, y'all, by Ms. Addie, that she's really quiet, because she's feisty when she needs to be. Okay. We'll now move to bills on second reader, Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee.
City Council Bill 15-0549, Release of Right Away, A 20-Foot-Wide Right-of-Way Through the Former Bed of Tyson Street. For the purpose of authorizing the release and surrender by the Mayor and City Council of Baltimore, all of its interests in and to the 20-foot-wide right-of-way, heretofore granted, the city of Baltimore through the former bed of Tyson Street, extending from West Franklin Street northerly 380 feet, more or less, to West Center Street in the vicinity of North Howard Street and Park Avenue, the location and course of the 20-foot-wide right-of-way to be released, being shown on the plat numbered RW 2036387 in the Office of Department of Transportation and providing for a special effective date.
Thank you, Mr. President. On second read, we have the hearing on the release of right-of-way of 20-foot-wide, 20-foot-wide right-of-way through the former bed of Tyson Street. We did hear it, and everything was in line and in order, and all departments were favorable. So I recommend favorably.
Second by Councilman Henry. All those in favor of approving this ordinance say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved. This ordinance move the third reader.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Hold up, hold up.
City Council Resolution 15, City Council Bill 15-0563, Sale of Property, A Portion of the Former Bed of Cardiff Avenue, For the Purpose of Authorizing the Mayor and City Council of Baltimore to Sell, At Either Public or Private Sale, All Its Interests in a Certain Parcel of Land Located in Block 6840 Adjacent to Lot 122nd That Is Part of the Former Bed of Cardiff Avenue, And No Longer Needed for Public Use, And Providing for a Special Effective Date.
Chair recognizes Councilman Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. President. Committee found everything in order. We recommend favorable.
Second by Councilman Henry. All those in favor of approving this ordinance say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved. This ordinance move the third reader. Urban Affairs and Aging Committee.
City Council Resolution 15-0273R, Request for State Action, Restore Senior Center Operating Fund Cuts. For the purpose of calling on the Maryland Department of Aging to immediately reverse the more than two-thirds cut to Baltimore's senior center operating funds, award and restore fiscal year 2016 funding levels to at least those awarded in fiscal year 2015, to avoid further endangering the health and well-being of our vulnerable elderly population.
Before I recognize Councilwoman Middleton, I want to thank her and Councilwoman Clark. Councilwoman Middleton introduced the resolution to have these funds restored, and they had a very nice hearing, and I understand that we got these funds restored. So I want to just thank her personally for even having the foresight to put the resolution in.
Thank you.
I said her name, right, Pat Clark, and we all signed on to it, but they were the two that spearheaded it, and I want to publicly thank both of you for a job well done. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. President, and this came at a wonderful time after we just had the celebration of the 112th year of Ms. Addie. But the committee heard this resolution on November 12th, 2015, and as you had mentioned prior to the hearing, the Governor's Office announced a one-time grant restoring the center's funds for the coming fiscal year, but we still have much work to do in trying to restore the formula so we can continue to have that amount of money and more. So I thank my colleague of the 14th District for having me partner with her in working to get this moving along. Nonetheless, we had a very constructive and informative hearing, and if there's anything, before we move the resolution, if there's anything my colleague would like to add, you're welcome to.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Clark.
Well, I just want to thank the Chair of the Committee for promptly scheduling the hearing, and the very scheduling of the hearing resulted in getting our money back, I believe. So basically, we got, we went from $45,000 up to $146,000 overnight, because the senior directors got together and were fighting those cuts. So I'm very happy. It's not often that you get money back from government, but in this case, we did. Thank you to the Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
And just putting a message out, we definitely have to be prepared so we can work with our state delegation to continue to move this formula forward and keep our funds moving, because our senior centers are so important for us. And this must, this might sound like a small amount of money, but it's affecting all of our centers, the gas and electric bills, just small programs, bus rides to, you know, to back and forth with transportation, so we need to keep this money in our budget. There are no amendments. I move the resolution favorable.
Second by Councilwoman Clark. All those in favor of adopting this resolution say aye. Those opposed, nay. This motion is approved. This resolution is adopted. Again, thank you.
Thank you.
Third reader for final passage.
City Council Bill 15-0557, Foreclosure Prevention Partnerships with Nonprofits and Financial Institutions, For the Purpose of Supporting the Effort to Get Delinquent Mortgages Into the Hands of Nonprofits, For the Purpose of Saving Homes From Foreclosure and Creating Affordable Housing, And Committing the City of Baltimore to Meet with Financial Entities With the Goal of Encouraging Them to Sell More Delinquent Mortgages to Qualified Nonprofits That Have the Funding and Infrastructure to Purchase, Service, and Hold the Mortgages and a Track Record of Doing So. President Young, Kraft, Scott, Kern, Henry Specter, Middleton, Mosby, Welsh, Rysinger, Costello, Stokes, Branch, Clark.
This bill is a move. I mean, this bill is approved. I need to see you.
City Council Bill 15-0558, Animal Fighting Paraphernalia. For the Purpose of Prohibiting the Possession, Sale, Transfer, or Manufacturing of Animal Fighting Paraphernalia, With the Intent to Engage in or Otherwise Promote or Facilitate an Animal Fight. Defining Certain Terms, Listing Relevant Factors, and Determining Whether an Object is an Item of Animal Fighting Paraphernalia. Imposing Certain Penalties and General Relating to the Object Used or Intended or Designed for Use in the Training, Preparation, Conditioning, or Breeding for Inconducting or Otherwise Infurtherance of Animal Fights. President Young, Kraft, Scott, Kern, Henry Specter, Middleton, Mosby, Welsh, Rysinger, Costello, Stokes, Branch, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 15-0561, Approving the Submission of an Application to the State of Maryland for the Designation of a Regional Institution Strategic Enterprise Zone. For the Purpose of Approving the Designation of the University of Maryland at Baltimore as a Qualified Institution Under the State's Regional Institution Strategic Enterprise Zone Program. Approving and Joining the Application for Designation of the Rise Zone at 873 West Baltimore Street, Baltimore, Maryland, and Granting a Real Property Tax Credit for Qualified Properties in this Rise Zone. President Young, Kraft, Scott, Kern, Henry Specter, Middleton, Mosby, Welsh, Rysinger, Costello, Stokes, Branch, Clark.
This bill is approved. Committee announcements. Committee announcement. Committee announcement. Chair recognizes Councilman Kern.
President, the Health Committee will meet on Tuesday, December 8th, 2015, at 1:00 PM in Dewburn's Chambers to hear City Council Ordinance 15-0584. Psychoactive Substances. It's for the purpose of prohibiting the distribution of psychoactive substances. Define certain terms, oppose administrative sanctions, civil fines, and criminal penalties for violations. And that's to be heard on Tuesday, December 8th, 2015, at 1:00 in Dewburn's Chambers.
Committee announcements. Chair recognizes Councilman Stokes.
Mr. President, I stand to announce a hearing on taxation, finance, economic development of Council Bill 15-0579 on Tuesday, November 24th, 10:45 AM here in Chamber, sorry, did it again. I must move for suspension of rules.
Second by Council Vice President Rysinger. All those in favor of suspending the rules, announce a hearing. Say aye. All opposed, nay. The motion is encouraged. Chair recognizes Councilman Stokes.
Thanks. Taxation, Finance, Economic Development, Bill Number 15-05- Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development, Bill Number 15-0579, Tuesday, November 24, 2015, here in Chambers, 10:45 AM. It's fire and police employees, retirement system, regular interest, for the purpose of modifying the definition of regular interest for valuation purposes and providing for a special effective date. Thank you, Mr. President.
Chair recognizes Councilman Branch.
Thank you, Mr. President. On Tuesday, January 5, 2016, at 4:00 PM, the Public Safety Committee will hold a hearing on 15-0252R, request for state action, Baltimore City Police Commission, calling on the General Assembly to enact, and the Governor to sign legislation authorizing Baltimore City to establish a police commission composed of city residents, police commission composed of city residents appointed by the Mayor and confirmed by the City Council to oversee the Baltimore City Police Department, and also, on Tuesday, January 5, 2016, at 4:00 PM, the Public Safety Committee will hold a hearing on 15-0253R, request for state action, strengthening the Civil Civilian Review Board, calling on the Baltimore City delegation to the Maryland General Assembly to introduce and secure enactment of legislation authorizing the Mayor and City Council to strengthen the Baltimore City Police Department Civilian Review Board. Thank you.
Thank you. Committee announcement. Chair recognizes Council Vice President Riesinger.
Mr. President, members of the council, the Land Use and Transportation Committee will hold a hearing on Bill 15-0576 on Wednesday, December 16, at 1:00 in the council chambers. The purpose is the Planning Commission, site-specific matters, notice and hearing on applications for final administrative decisions. The committee will hold a voting session on Bill 13-0299 on Monday, November 30, at 9:55 AM. This is zoning district use conversion of a one-family dwelling unit to a two-family dwelling unit in the R8 zoning district. This is a variance located at 2642 McGelder Street. The committee will hold a hearing, the committee will hold a hearing on Bill 12-0152, this is Transform Baltimore, in regards to map amendments, on December 15, at 6:00 PM. The location is Baltimore Polytech Institute, located at 1400 West Cold Spring Lane, and this is on Channel TV 25. The committee will also have a work session, voting session, which is televised on 12, on Bill 12-0152, which is Transform Baltimore. This is a work session and a voting session on January 4, at 5:00 PM in the council chambers. The committee will have a voting session on 12-0152, Transform Baltimore. This is a voting session which will be on January 12, 10:00 AM in the council chambers. This also will be televised. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any more committee announcements? Okay, we have regular announcements. First, I want to wish Councilman Costello a happy birthday. His birthday is going to be November 23, am I correct? All right. Okay, and I want to let everyone know that Laurie Green, who is the Director of Council Magic Services, was voted Man of the Year by his church, so let's give him a hand. Laurie had to step away because he had to attend, I think, his funeral at his church. So, at church, that's why he's the Man of the Year. Okay. Regular announcements. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Middleton.
I'd like to first of all have a request, a moment of silence for all the recent killings we have been having here lately in the city of Baltimore, and I would particularly like to add Kendall Fenwick to the name on that list, which we have been hearing about, this single 24-year-old father of three, raising his children, and trying to take care of his home and do what's right, and he's been a part of the community, and just trying to keep his children safe, and this terrible thing happens to him. I also would like to thank my colleague, Brandon Scott, for joining me the last couple days, and yesterday was really a wonderful day, and he was putting up this fence and trying to fence in his home to keep the criminals from going on his property, and yesterday, the police department and community folks from everywhere just participated and completed the surrounding of the house with the fence that he wanted. They took up donations and went back to the store, and they, you know, put, finished the aesthetics and the, with the flowers, and just really made the property like a sanctuary. So, you know, the family just appreciates all of the support that they are getting from the city, and hopefully and prayerfully, we will get the person that's, that committed this terrible crime. So, again, a moment of silence for Kendall Fenwick and his family.
Thank you, Councilwoman. That day, I was going to try to make it, but as you know, I had a meeting with the community presidents around the same time that they were doing the walk for the gentleman, and my condolences are to his family. And we really need to get community and those who know these folk who are doing the killings in our city to really step up, and that means grandmothers, aunts, uncles, cousins need to start turning in relatives. You know, I mean, if we want to get control of this city, and we really want to stop the murders, that means we all have to do our part. If that means turning in your relatives, that's what you have to do. You know, I mean, we cannot continue 302 murders, I don't know how many there is now, because we sitting in here. Could be somebody else's son that was murdered, you know, it's, we all want somebody to tell when it's our family, but when it's somebody else's family, nobody wants to tell. This stop-sitching mentality has to stop. It sickens me to death when I hear on the news we talk about ISIS as terrorists in other parts of the world, when we have ISIS right here in Baltimore, and I don't care what nobody say. We have terrorists right here in the city of Baltimore that's killing our young men, and we need to think about having boots on the ground right here in Baltimore until we get control of the senseless killings that's going on in our city. These guns are coming from somewhere. People know who is killing these people in the city, yet we sit by idle and talk about we afraid because there's no one to protect us. Hey, you could be next, and you're still not protected. If we are serious about changing the culture in Baltimore City, then we might have to change the way we think. And if it means turning our relatives in, that's what it means. I turned my own brother in, God bless his soul, he's dead now. He was out there dealing drugs, and I turned him in. If I can turn mine in, you can turn yours in, especially if they're killing. Regular announcement, any more announcements? Chair recognizes Councilman Kern.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Mr. President, for those words, and you're very much on point, that we have terror in the streets of Baltimore, where our citizens are being murdered one by one, but I also want to ask for a moment of silence for the terror that's happening across the ocean with the loss of lives in Paris, France, the other day. We have Thanksgiving coming up a week from now, and be thankful that our country is somewhat isolated from some of the activities which are happening around by the terrorist groups, but we're not totally out of the woods concerning terror in our cities. Washington DC, New York, Baltimore, any of the major urban areas could be prone to certain attacks by radical groups that want to express their displeasure with the United States. Last week, we honored our veterans for the holiday, and we need to appreciate our armed forces, how they keep us as safe as we can be compared to other countries around the world. But I ask for a moment of silence for the victims. Even though there was only one US citizen, suppose we had been killed of the 130 folks that are died, maybe some more because of their injuries, but we need to recognize that we're not in a vacuum here. When things happen around the world, it could happen here too, so, let's be vigilant. See something, say something. As Council President says, for the local terrorists that are killing our community members one by one, or for those that want to come in and do with some weapons of mass destruction, we need to be vigilant. See something, say something. Keep our city safe, our state safe, keep our communities safe. Thank you.
Regular announcements. Chair recognizes Vice President Riesinger.
Mr. President, and members of the council, the next meeting of the City Council will be held on Monday, December 7, at 5:00 PM in the council chambers. Mr. President, I ask for a moment of silence for Kendall Fenwick, those who were killed in Paris, France, and also for our veterans.
And if I may add, for all those who have been killed in the city of Baltimore, including that young father who was building the fence. Thank you, there being no further business. This concludes the 1/4th meeting of the 71st turn of Baltimore City Council. Good night.